Good evening, welcome to the City Commission meeting September 7th. We'll call the meeting into order. Everyone, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Campbell.
Here.
Fournier.
Here.
Goodnow.
Here.
Hammond.
Here.
Krapp.
Here.
Menzner.
I'm here.
Voorhees.
Here.
Okay, moving on to announcements, acknowledgements, communications, and reports. Do we have any?
No, ma'am.
Okay. I will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
Mayor Krapp, I move that we adopt the agenda as presented.
Support.
Anybody have any questions? Okay, call the roll, please.
Campbell.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Goodnow.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Krapp.
Yes.
Menzner.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Okay, this is the portion that we allow the public to participate in the meeting. We ask that you give us your full name, your residential address, and that you abide by our three-minute rule. And we also ask that you keep your comments addressed to the commission. At this point, we will entertain anyone in person, and then, do we have people on the Zoom call, Patrick? All right, so then we'll go to the Zoom call. So go ahead, and the mic is open.
For the last couple months, June, July, August, I brought before you the property on northbound Grashit where those trees are and where a couple years ago, girls ran out in front of my car because somebody was trying to attack them coming out of those tall trees. He cut them down two years ago, two, three years ago. Well, like I stated before, there was a man that didn't have his clothes on in there, and this was in daytime, and I drove around the block, he was gone. If we can have in our ordinances for someone to cut their grass if it gets so high and everything for citizens of this city, but yet people who don't even live in this city can grow crap on their vacant properties, any kind of way that impedes the safety of the citizens within this city, we need to change something. That, those things are not cut down yet. Here it is, September, and the gentleman, when I spoke to him, he alluded to, he didn't have to, really, only had, he only had to cut it a foot away from the sidewalk. A foot away from the sidewalk does not help the safety of the citizens on the east side of Grashit. Yes, I'm gonna put it like that, on the east side of Grashit. Coming into this town, looking at that mess, it's a safety hazard. People ride their bikes, they push their kids, they do everything along that sidewalk. Anybody can get hurt, and I, it just bothers me every time I go by and see it. So like I say, you need to get on that, either change the ordinance for people that own property outside the city to keep it neat and safety, or eliminate the ordinance for people cutting their grass over 12 inches.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thomas Barnes, 291 Jones Street, Mount Clemens. For those of you who don't know, let me properly introduce myself. For the last two years, I have served the city of Mount Clemens as the Director of our recreational program, Sportport. In conjunction with the Metro Deteriorated YMCA, I have brought recreational programs, along with my counterparts at Advancing Macomb, to several parks in the city of Mount Clemens. Before my time serving with Advancing Macomb, doing the Sportport Initiative through Project Play and the Ralph C. Wilson Foundation, my wife and I and several other community volunteers volunteered at the then Jermaine Jackson Community Center, where we made significant financial investments into rehabilitating that building and the programs that were happening in that building. Since the city has seen it fit to partner on the project at Shady Side Park with the kickball field, a group of dads and I, through our Sportport Initiative, have been volunteering to run weekly kickball games there for children and families all through the city of Mount Clemens. I have also, I also served your city on the Mount Clemens Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. With all that being said, I would like to know what the city's financial investment in recreation for our children is. I live in a city where my children can't even go to the school district, to be honest. I'm a person who rallied for this school district. I spent $7,000 of my own money painting a basketball court to rally our community around our school district, but when I moved my children into the district, I quickly realized that as much lipstick as you put on a pig, eventually somebody is going to want to taste the pork, and it was rotten. So now, as a parent of five, I look around the city and wonder what kind of recreational programs are offered for my children in this city, and there are none. Only the ones that the group that I have been pushing forward offer to our residents. My question to you is simple. As I sit on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, we sent a recommendation to the city manager's office recommending a $200,000 a year investment from the city of Mount Clemens to bring in a Parks and Recreation Director. That would have allowed not only a $60,000 a year budget for a Recreation Director, but also $40,000 for them to hire an assistant, then with a $100,000 budget to be able to rethink Parks and Recreation in the city of Mount Clemens. This board seen it fit to slash that budget in half, then allocate $75,000 of that $100,000 to the Boys and Girls Club. While I am anxious and I am, I have a very good outlook of the potential of the partnership with the Boys and Girls Club, as history has proved to me, our partnerships haven't served us well.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to the commission?
Good evening, Mayor Krapp, City Commissioners George Cale, 180 Grand Ave. At the last City Commission meeting, Mayor Krapp, I'm telling you, the more things change, the more they stay the same. I did ask a question in regard to pleasantries and the development of the Gibraltar site as to how they were inserted into that process without being involved with the original application, the permit, and the potential for licensing for that site. I did not hear back from the city manager, so of course, I did, Mayor Krapp, as you recall, emailed you and every city commissioner that we have a problem with the processes that are taking place there. I do have a handout for the commissioners, and for the mayor, one each, a little bit of homework, if you will, just to show a consistency in regard to a pattern. We do need to carefully examine this proposed marijuana business ordinance that is on the agenda. I have tracked this over the last several years. This has been a process that this City Commission has been enamored in for some time, and for some reason, we still can't get it straight. With this proposed new regulation or ordinance, excuse me, for recreational marijuana or adult use, we're pretty much bypassing a few of the rules and regulations that are not only within the state of Michigan, but that we find within our own ordinance under the MMFLA. For some reason, it seems as if we're turning a blind eye, and we're enabling pleasantries and the owner of the Gibraltar Trade Center site to just go ahead and bait and switch and put in another state licensing to continue the development there where they have no right or claim to do such. I'm sure our city attorney will do what he can, argue the exact opposite. We also need to table item number 9D in regard to the language that is in that proposed adult use or recreational ordinance. So that other question I'm still waiting to hear from in regard to how pleasantries all of a sudden was able to insert themselves midstream over at that site. So the question this week would be, did the city attorney have any help, outside help from council, to draft that ordinance as it's submitted before you right now? All of a sudden, this point system is sitting there, there are other parts of the language that is in that particular draft ordinance that was not approved of by this City Commission that's getting slipped in. So perhaps we can table that, review whether or not pleasantries even has any right or standing to be doing what they've been doing over at that site, and then do this the right way, do the right thing for the citizens, taxpayers of this community. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to the commission?
You're here first, but thank you so much. Hello, I am Beverly Bishop from 54 Kendrick. Thank you very much for hearing me, Commissioners Mayor and others. I just wanted to again show you a lovely plaque and let you know that we put up three of these within the last week and a half, that people are showing more interest and community pride in our beautiful historic homes. It's something truly to be proud of what we're doing here. So in fact, we put one at 76 and 150 Lodwick for years of 1918 and 1940. Around the block on Maras, we did one on 79 Maras for 1899. So we have, and they're in wonderful shape and beautiful, so that's really something to look at. In addition to that, Labor Day yesterday, the Rosie the Riveters were acknowledged over at the Crocker House. They had a dedication of specific roses for Rosie the Riveters that were here from Mount Clemens, and it was a beautiful ceremony, delayed because of COVID, but it finally came around. These were our women that are true workers. And if you're interested in more, what happened in Mount Clemens through the First World War and the Second World War, mostly the second, I'll be covering everything that was in the Monitor Leader for our genealogy group over at the library on November 9th. So I'll take the entire year, January to December, and tell you how our people coped during that time. So that's pretty much what we look at. The other thing I wanted to mention is that we did have a porch walk at the Crocker House, and that was amazing. The people that donated their porches came out onto their lawns, provided large storyboards, and did a magnificent job to show off their pride of their home, were evident at 12 addresses. 12, it's the biggest one we've ever had. And it was starting over at 91 Welts and Jones, which some of you might know, and that corner of Welts and Jones is a school, it's Lincoln School, of course. And that is now the Covenant Christian Center. They were wonderful, they opened it up, we used their bathrooms, people could park their car there, and then we rotated all around that area onto Welch Street, two addresses, over onto Jones Street, three addresses, over onto Gallup Street, which was huge and so old, we had four addresses, one on North Grashit. So I just wanted to tell you that those people really came together and did something that was really amazing. I asked every one of those people, do you live in Mount Clemens? The people that came, because I wanted to sell them a marker. I also wanted to sell them an application to the depot to become a member. Very few lived in Mount Clemens, so maybe we're not doing our job of promoting to our own Mount Clemens people, but they came from miles around. I mean, we drew a crowd that came from everywhere, Redford and just everywhere. That's my time. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Beth. Is there anyone else?
Patrick Abajuta, 138 Northbound Grashit. At the last commission meeting, two commissioners spoke out about favoritism and what is now 100% clear after reading this ordinance written by Mr. Murray, as a fact, it's the same favoritism that we saw in the MMFLA ordinance a couple of years ago. These two commissioners spoke out bravely against injustice and against the favoritism, and I applaud them for doing so, and the two commissioners that supported them. I am now asking for all of the commissioners to join and do the same, and the mayor as well, and stand for what is right, what is fair, and what is just, and vote against this ordinance being read today. I'm a little disheartened at seeing people influence ordinances that affect this community but benefit only their pockets, falsely representing themselves, pay-to-play promises that have never come to fruition, changing plans after applications have been submitted, allowed to be continued against, directly, allowed to continue directly against violation of the MMFLA ordinance, potential applicants who are moving in a direction as if they're pre-approved, and somehow foresee languages that was not on the draft ordinances but is now included in this ordinance. This point system marks for an unfair monopoly, almost like one applicant or potential applicant getting a perfect score. One of the commissioners even spoke about, but did not disclose of the other comments, propositions, promises, and threats that a certain property owner has made. If she heard them, that means all of you heard them, because he more likely contacted everyone. So what are these comments, what are these promises, what were made? I'm asking every single commissioner if they could respond. I know we heard about towing the facilities, and a lot of commissioners did. We saw donations made to certain things that happened, but it sounds like they're done with restrictions. So at this point, it's easier to point fingers without evidence, but the evidence is very present and clear here, it's in plain sight. You know, who am I? I'm no one. I'm always told the commission, the city staff, to be ignored. Discriminating against as if myself and my affiliates were not a part of this community. But yet, here we stand, doing charitable things out of the goodness of our hearts, because we care for the city. We don't do it for recognition or have something named after us. We do it for the benefit of all, passing on blessings that were passed on to us. We should, everybody should, have the best city's interests in mind. This applicant process, or application process should be fair for all, across the board, allowing applicants to amend in order for them to receive potential more points, in order for them to get a license or renewal license. It sounds like they, it was written for them, or them writing it themselves. Again, I'm asking the commission to do what is right, pass a fair ordinance, whether you're new or have been here since beginning, like my partner and I, I'm just asking for you all to vote this down and do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to the commission in person? Okay, we'll go ahead and move to Zoom. No one on Zoom? Okay. All right, then we will move on to administrative responses to issues or questions raised during previous meetings.
I have nothing.
All right, we will move on to approval of minutes. I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the work session and City Commission meeting minutes for August 16, 2021, and work session for August 30 of 2021 as well.
Support.
Anybody have any questions or comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Fournier.
Yes.
Goodnow.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Krapp.
Yes.
Menzner.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Okay, Agenda Item 9A, Public Hearing for Squirrel Investments, KE Electric Brownfield Plan, Mr. Johnson.
You want a motion first?
Yes, but let me, let it, I needed to open it my computer first. Okay, go ahead.
I move to open the public hearing as, on a request to consider the approval of Brownfield redevelopment plan for 141 North Grossbeck Highway.
I'll second it.
Okay. All right, go ahead, Mr. Johnson.
Squirrel Investments, 141 LC, this is, same group of people we know as KE Electric. Owner of 141 North Grossbeck has prepared a brownfield plan to assess in the redevelopment of this property pursuant to the Brownfield Redevelopment Financing Act, PA 381 of 1996, as amended. This public hearing is being held to hear public comments related to the adoption of the Brownfield Plan. We have previously held a work session, at which time a complete presentation of the plan was given to the City Commission and to the public. I did tell the petitioner that they did not need to plan on repeating that presentation tonight, that you may have questions for them about specifics, but that they didn't need to do a presentation. Thank you.
So at this time, we will ask if anyone from the public has any questions, comments about this redevelopment at 141 North Grossbeck? We did already vote? Oh. Oh, because we didn't vote on the actual hearing. Okay, so, well, I take it back. Let us vote to open the public hearing first, go ahead. Roll call, please.
Goodnow.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Krapp.
Yes.
Menzner.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Okay, now, we can ask any of the public who would like to speak on just this topic, please. This is the one, the redevelopment of 141 North Grossbeck Highway. We'll just ask that if you have any questions or comments, you take the mic. And I believe the commission can ask at that point as well, it's fine.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Menzner.
Oh, let Commissioner Goodnow go first.
Okay.
You know, it'll take a while.
The only question I have was, well, first of all, I wanted to say I was very impressed by the presentation, because I'd never been over there, I didn't have a reason to go over there. But my question to you is, and I was very concerned and interested, is your diversity and inclusion policy of your staffing, is that going to change?
If you remember, we talked a little bit about my foundation also, okay? When you came through, you were counting heads of color, and we have four locations, different, different heads of, you know, people, people of different diversity in different places. We hire, our constituency, your constituency is people of the city, our constituency is the shareholders, and actually, our coworkers, we consider constituency. But all of us, you and I, like the young lady said earlier, are really searching for customers. We're trying to bring customers into the city. She talked about her, I guess it was a house walker, whatever, and she brought people in from Redford, that's pretty cool. I sell all over the country, southeast Michigan, basically, so I'm trying to please my customers with who we hire. So we hire those that will please the customers the very best. I can only hire from the pool of applicants. And the best way to describe this, we talked about my foundation. My wife and I, some years ago, founded Sandbox Foundation. We give six scholarships away each year, they're a substantial scholarship. Six years, six times, 36 scholarships that we've given away, and to date, we haven't given a single scholarship to a person from Mount Clemens. We haven't had an application. I can't give something to somebody who doesn't apply. So my suggestion is, if you really believe in this project, and if you like what you saw at our business, and we like all of our people, and we don't, you know, on the application of Sandbox Foundation, we don't ask male, female. In fact, this year, we were confused, we had a name, Avery, we didn't know whether it was a boy or a girl. We don't care, you know, we, we don't, we don't try to hire of a specific pool, we try to hire the best from the pool that applies to us. So if you want to do the best for your constituents, then get them to apply. I'd love, I'd love to have plenty of applications. My three sons are here, they run the business. Rocky, my oldest, here in the Thai, he does most of the hiring, and he'll hire from the very best.
So, let me go back again, so are you going to implement a diversity and inclusion policy?
I'm not going to introduce a specific policy. I will hire the best workers to please the customer base, to bring, bring the customers to our stores, and we have stores, four stores, not just Mount Clemens.
Right.
So I'm going to hire, I'm going to direct them to hire the best applicants from whatever pool applies when we need people. My recommendation is you send as many applications as possible, because as you can just imagine right now, it's hard to find enough help.
Right.
It's very hard.
I agree with you.
Send them in. That's my best recommendation. I don't even really know, I've heard something about the Mount Clemens schools, I don't even really know if you have a graduating class anymore, I don't know that.
Yes, we do.
We, we, okay, I've never seen an application for a scholarship from your school. Lance Cruz North, had a couple, Dakota, we live in Romeo, that's where the bigger pool comes from. That counseling office in Romeo is awesome. They hammer those kids to get an application in. I don't know what they're doing, but they're sending many in. Lance Cruz, Little Weaker, Dakota's better, Eisenhower. So my recommendation is, be, be my advocate. Send me all the applications you can, we'll pick the very best.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Commissioner Menzner.
So I just want to point out that in the document, it says the redevelopment of the site is not feasible in the absence of brownfield incentives, and I wanted to point out that, you know, the gravel mining stopped in the 70s. It's been 50 years, other than a few golf balls hit into the pond, for that property to have been a viable, usable piece of property. So I commend you for, you know, for, for looking at that and pursuing the brownfield. I wanted to know, in the document, it's that the Michigan Strategic Fund, have we heard anything about, and I know that there was a clause or a part that said that we didn't think that it would happen, but has there been a definite answer on the approval of the 381 work plan? Have we, have you applied anyway? And when will we hear the results from that?
My name is Jeff Lanaram, with us, MBM, the Brownfield Redevelopment Consultant, hired for this project, and the Act 381 work plan has not been submitted yet. The Brownfield Plan has to be approved first before we do that. And it's my understanding that we've made some contacts with the state regarding non-environmental, that's what you're speaking of with MSF, and it was difficult to get some interest, but I'm not sure, I don't have an official answer on whether or not they've actually rejected or not as far as the non-environmental.
Okay, and has Eagle approved the work plan?
No, that's, you have to have an approved Brownfield Plan to submit with the Act 381, so you get the Brownfield Plan approved first, and then the Act 381 work plan, which is highly detailed, and all the activities that will, that will be implemented on the site, and the environmental activities, that's detailed in the Act 381 work plan, which will be submitted within the next month.
Perfect. And, and then I just noted that, you know, in some of the reports, we were above levels in arsenic, chromium, copper, lead, mercury, selenium, and zinc. So your abatement plan is going to eliminate any danger to the public of those chemicals?
Yes, so what, actually, there's actually additional data that Macomb County has recently collected out there for, for the owner, and actually, we have soil gas concentrations out here now as well of volatile organics and methane. So the new development's actually going to mitigate those concerns and make sure that the building is safe, that it's properly capped, so that, so that the runoff and everything else that could be going to the surface water body, that's, that's all going to be covered with that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else? Anyone from the public? All right, thank you. Well, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Mayor Krapp, I move that we close the public hearing on a request to consider the approval of the Brownfield redevelopment plan for 141 North Grossbeck Highway.
Support.
Support.
Any questions? Okay, roll call, please.
Hammond.
Yes.
Krapp.
Yes.
Menzner.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Goodnow.
Yes.
Moving on to General Business 9B, approve squirrel investments KE Electric Brownfield Plan.
I move to adopt the attached resolution approving a Brownfield Plan for 141 North Grossbeck Highway.
Support.
Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Krapp.
Yes.
Menzner.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Goodnow.
No.
Hammond.
Yes.
Motion passes? Thanks, guys. Thank you very much for your investment.
Yes, thank you.
All right, we'll move on to Agenda Item 9C, approve the city brand. I'll entertain a motion.
Go ahead, you can bail.
Yeah, sorry, guys. You don't have to sit through this. Thanks. Good, I was too, too zoned in. All right, okay, go ahead.
I move to approve the new city brand as prepared by Redhead Creative Consultancy and recommended by the Branding Committee, including the brand story, brand voice, positioning statement, tone of voice, value proposition, logo, icon, taglines, and mascot.
Mouthful. Sounds like there's a tsunami out there.
Yeah.
Uh, go ahead, I'm sorry, did somebody?
Support.
Okay. All right, do we have, anybody have any questions or comments? Did we want to, did, do we have the boards? Did we want to put those out?
I did not put them out, because they've all been presented before, they're in my office.
Oh, never mind, okay. All right, I'm sorry. All right, I'm sorry, go ahead, does anyone have any questions or comments?
I'm excited about the rebranding. I've come to love paddles.
We're glad to hear it.
As Don was mentioning in the meeting, that there's a lot we can do with the mascot paddles. So, excited for it, see what's going on.
Mascots are meant to be fun, and that's all they are.
It took me a minute, I was a little taken back at first.
I had somebody at the DDA meeting that was afraid that the mascot wasn't serious enough.
I wondered that.
Were they looking at my picture at the time, or what? I like, I like, I like the brand, I'm tired of the oil spill logo, we need something new.
Ooh, oil spill, I haven't heard that one before. I always called the star David. Very good.
I would note that there were two concerns raised on August 30th. The first one that everybody considers completely legitimate, even though none of us saw it beforehand, and that's the T possibly looking like an I. And the problem was really because the top of the T wasn't much bigger than a dot. It's been revised, the T's been extended a little bit, and the top of the T's been extended in both directions, so that there's no way you can mistake it for a dot anymore. The other one is with the flag, and let's just set that one aside for the moment, we'll come back to that later.
Okay.
Fair enough.
Is the city logo going to be, in the city seal, are they the same thing?
No.
So is the seal going to be the same as the logo, or is it?
No, in, within the presentation, both were shown. But essentially, what the seal is, is text circling the icon.
The squiggly line, too.
And terminology, when I refer to the logo, I'm talking about Mount Clemens with the river crossing the T.
Okay.
When I say the icon, I'm talking about the circular image by itself. The seal had text that said the city of Mount Clemens, Michigan, surrounding the icon.
And I will say that I am looking forward to seeing a plan of what we're going to do with this. And not just spend money to change the flag and change everybody's hats and whatnot. But what we're going to do with this to promote the city.
Well, you know, that was one of the concerns that I voiced on last week, is that we have a brand, but we need somebody to, to market that brand for the entire city. And that takes me right back to the conversation about an economic development director, somebody that concentrates solely on marketing, and, you know, driving business and business retention to our city. I agree that we needed to do something to update this brand. We are no longer Bath City, we haven't been Bath City in a long time. That's old and over. But I, I need kind of a plan of action to go with this, in order for the rebranding to be, you know, viable for the entire city, and not just the DDA area. We need a plan of how we're going to market this, and how we're going to get this information to every business. I think that's a piece that's missing here.
I think that's the next step, right? We've got the, we've got the look, but now we've got to get the plan. I agree.
And I did not like my duck.
You didn't like your duck?
Poor Teresa.
I love my duck.
I liked my duck, too.
I don't have gray hair.
Well, I will say I have more gray hair now than I did two years ago.
I hide it, well. The other thing that I was-
You had to be there, they did a duck of all of us.
Yeah.
I guess that-
Was there anyone?
The only other thing is that I can tell you, I was, and I know it was partly a joke, or, but I was not enamored of the May McKenna shirt. I think the city has a lot more positive things to base its reputation on than the first madam of the city.
Is there anyone else who has any questions or comments? All right, roll call, please.
Muntzer.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Goodenough.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Crop.
Yes.
Agenda Item 9D, marijuana business ordinance first reading. I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve their introduction and first reading of the marijuana business ordinance, and to set September 20th, 2021, as the date for the second reading and adoption of the ordinance.
Support.
Okay, Mr. Johnson.
We've gone through a long process on this. Mr. Murray has completed a revision of the ordinance, which is scheduled for first reading tonight. This reflects the actions of the commission taken following the discussions of the four significant areas of the ordinance, as identified by Mr. Murray at meetings on June 7th, 21st, July 6th, and July 19th. These followed the presentation of an initial first draft that was done at a work session on May 17th. Changes to the first draft are highlighted in red on the one that we submitted this time. They're all made pursuant to commission direction, except for Section 24.1172D on pages 12 and 13. This section was changed to substitute a point system for initial application selection in place of the subjective selection criteria in the first draft. Mr. Murray can speak to his reasons for including this, but basically, it comes down to that most of the litigation regarding recreational marijuana ordinances have attacked the selection process as failing to comply with the state's mandate contained in MCL 333.279594. And that is that the municipality shall decide among competing applications by a competitive process intended to select applicants who are best suited to operate in compliance with this act, but that the municipality. The motion we're asking you to adopt tonight is to approve first reading, the introduction and first reading, and to set September 20th as the date for second reading and adoption of the ordinance. If there is any desire to make any further changes, you could still adopt on first reading and just change the date for, for final adoption, to give Mr. Murray time to incorporate any other changes you wish.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Murray?
There are two changes that I will be making between the adoption tonight, assuming it's adopted, and the second reading. And that is that I will be adding to Section 24.123C, I will be adding the word, micro-business. And to 24.124, I will be adding micro-business. What, with these two sections, what these two additions do is, it's in uniformity with prior sections, that a micro-business permit holder, licensee, and each stakeholder shall not have an interest in a grower, processor, provisioning center, retail establishment, safety compliance, location, or a secure transporter. That is in the state statute. So I want to add those so that we're consistent, even though the proposed ordinance says, "Any operation must comply with state law." It's, you know, so I think we'd be covered there anyway, but I want to add those two things. And in addition, I have had some comment from the administration that the indenting is not consistent in the ordinance, and that there is some numbering that is in uniform, so we'll clear those items up before the second meeting.
Anybody have any?
Does anybody have a go?
Go ahead, Commissioner Muntzer.
All right, so I'm going to be flipping pages, so, so I'm looking at on page three, "Excess marijuana grower means a license issued to a person holding five Class C marijuana grower licenses, and license to cultivate and sell and otherwise transfer." And it's followed up on page six with locations and permits authorized. I, I, I am really leery of this. We granted one, you know, you know, one of those facilities, and that goes to a specific person, and I'm not in, I'm not in favor of this. I think there's some confusion in pending applications for renewal and amendment.
Commissioner Muntzer, can you clarify that? I'm sorry, I'm, I'm confused by what you just said. I wasn't, I didn't follow, we didn't follow what you just said.
What are you not in favor of?
What are you not in favor of?
I, I am not in favor of having only one type of facility, Class C facility, for fifteen hundred plants. We gave that excess marijuana grower, we gave him five Class C grower licenses. So it, it appears to me that this was written specifically for that one license or permit applicant.
Well, the medical marijuana ordinance that was approved by the city commission only provided for one grower. We continued the number of establishments that was in that ordinance, the medical ordinance, into the first draft of this business ordinance. We didn't change it, we kept it the same.
Well, we added excess marijuana grower.
That's because that is the term under the recreational ordinance. That is the equivalent of the grower term in the medical marijuana ordinance. It's, it's, we didn't add anything. These two, number twos, and in all of this was presented, that was one of the first issues, in our series of discussions on medical marijuana in the last two months, was how many establishments are you going to authorize? And, and these were the numbers that were presented to the commission at that point in time. And at that point, the only issues that were raised relative to that was micro businesses and designated consumption establishments, which we have added.
And events.
And, well, that's, that's not really a permit that we issued, you know, we would, it's not at a set location most very greatly. So it's not, not even one of the designated, where we designate how many we could have. You could have multiple requests for a marijuana event, or you could have no requests. That isn't in the charter.
Well, thank you for your clarification, but I stand by my opinion. I'm looking at, on page 11, and it was mentioned briefly on page eight, about renewal applications and amendments. I think we're coming up to the end of one of, of a, some of our, the permits we've issued.
We have not issued any permits. We have not issued a permit under medical marijuana. We conditionally approved two provisioning centers. And the conditions were listed on the, on the conditional approval letter. Those conditions have not been met as of today's date. They have until December to meet those conditions.
And then what happens in December, if they meet those conditions, or if they don't meet those conditions?
Well, if they meet the conditions, they will be, assuming they have their state license, they will, as a matter of fact, the one applicant is in the process right now of completing the process. They will be, from us, they will receive a permit.
And will they be required to fill out another application for that permit?
No, no.
Okay. Can I ask a question?
And when you look at the ordinance, when it talks about renewals, that is talking about once there are permits issued, there are businesses in operation, there are annual renewals required. If you look at the initial, there's a separate paragraph on the initial application procedure.
I never, yeah.
That's different, okay? And that's, that's where we had the point system. But once you have any of these businesses open and operating, each year, there's going to be an annual renewal and an annual fee.
While we're on this topic, can I ask one question? So in December, when, assuming that both applicants get, complete everything they need to do and get this, if the applicant, the original applicant, the partners in that, or the shareholders, or the members of the LLC have changed, is that still the same applicant, or is it a new applicant?
This is a minor portion of correspondence that I have had over that situation. With attorneys for the landlord, with other parties, we have repeatedly instructed them that the original applicant, the one you're asking about, with the location at Gibraltar, was LLC that is named VBJ Mount Clemens LLC. The members of that LLC are two brothers, whose last name is Salani. Those are the people who were approved. And we have repeatedly instructed that any change in the membership, significant change, would require a new application, and in my opinion, would require opening up the process again, so other people can apply. So that is our position, unlike what's been represented repeatedly, that the city somehow is not aware of someone talking at meetings who really has no interest in this particular location and/or application. He's been instructed of that by letter. So, yeah, I'm waiting to see. We did, I will say one thing, when the letters for extension came through from both of those applicants, they were executed on the VBJ by the Salani brothers, and not by someone else. And as far as we know, that is the status. If that status were to change prior to the city issuing a permit to them, then they would have to go, in my opinion, would have to restart the process.
If we get to December, and they have not completed all of the actions necessary to be permitted by the state or us or whoever, what, what, what happens then?
It's going to be up to the commission. I mean, if they petition to extend for additional time, then the commission would have to make a decision, whether they would grant that or not grant it.
So we could grant additional time, or we could say no and start the process all over?
Well, you wouldn't be starting the process off over, you've got two, two separate issues. The two conditional permits that have been granted are for medical marijuana. This new ordinance encompasses recreational marijuana. So if they have not done anything, all, they would lose the preference that is in this ordinance for establishments that are operating already with a medical license, because they would not have a medical operation in effect. So they would no longer have the preference that is in there relative to the point system. So you would be entertaining, making, a decision would be made based upon the point system, and then it'd be presented to you, and then the commission would decide whether or not to grant the recreational license. or not to grant the recreational license to someone. But the medical license would have to, nobody would have that one. They'd have to reapply. There'd be a new process.
So we could have someone reapply for the medical, the second medical, or does that just go away?
It'd still be in, it's still allowed under the ordinance, so.
So we could have someone apply for the second medical license and apply separately for the recreational license?
Sure. You'd have them both open at that point. But.
Mike, what is the situation with the Grossbeck Highway building?
My understanding is they are getting their final approvals. They have sent, they've sent us a copy of the correspondence that they sent to the State of Michigan indicating that they were ready to receive their license from the state.
Have we approved, have they applied to us?
Oh, sure, sure.
They have.
And they've gone through the building and, you know, they, all of the conditions that were part of that conditional permit, they've complied with at this point. And, I mean, Brian, the Building Department, I believe, is pretty well, they've complied with everything.
So just.
They'll be in operation.
Soon?
Yes.
Yeah.
So once the state approves them, they, we approve them?
Once the state approves them and they have had their final inspections and certificates of occupancy issued through the Building Department, I believe that's, that's it?
That's it.
That's it.
Yeah. We are going to issue a permit, you know, because they have a permit under our ordinance for medical marijuana provisioning center, you know, but it's just going to be a one-page document.
Okay.
At that time, when they are, let's assume that they are very close and come before December, they should have all their conditions met, and they are, we give them a permit, they will have a license to operate a medical marijuana facility. If we pass this, they will also have a license to.
They will make an application like everyone else, anybody who wants to apply for recreational licenses in all the different categories. In this, there is a preference given under the point system for a business that has a medical marijuana license. And the reason for that is that most communities wanted them together. You know, I mean, and you're not going to have a medical marijuana on one corner and a recreational on the other. It's not going to work, you know? So that's, most communities, or a lot of the communities, their ordinances give a preference. And the reason that I have put, the preference was in the first draft you received. There was a preference.
Yes, there was.
But I changed it to the point system because of all the litigation that has occurred in other communities relative to recreational marijuana. And the litigation, we've had a number of judges, Oakland County, Traverse City, and there's, and the federal court in Detroit, have all said, the statute says you are supposed to have a competitive process, and it is to determine who can best operate a marijuana business in compliance with the Act. And they have gone on to say, like, the first draft where it had a lot of different factors that the manager was going to evaluate to make a ranking, the courts have issued preliminary injunctions enjoining the municipalities from issuing anything, because they said, what does social equity, in the case of Detroit, what's that got to do with a competitive process to best operate? What does filling a vacant building have to do? You know, all of those kinds of subjective factors they've thrown out. So that's why I have the point system, because it is a competitive process. And I would add one further thing. The state statute provides, okay, the department, and this is in 2020, the department shall begin accepting applications for marijuana establishments within 12 months after the effective date of this act. Except as otherwise provided in this section, for 24 months after the department begins to receive applications for marijuana establishments, the department may only accept applications for licensed or for a marijuana retailer, marijuana processor, Class B grower, Class C grower, or marijuana secure transporter from persons holding a state operating license pursuant to the Medical Marijuana Facilities Act. So the state was, in effect, saying, we are preferring people that have the medical license over anyone else. So, now, in this case, obviously, if, if one or both of these medical establishments are not open and operating, then neither one of them will be getting a preference in terms of points. Those points wouldn't be allocated. So then everybody who, who applied would be, you'd be looking at the other criteria.
Are there other questions or comments?
Yeah, I looked at, we zoned the designated consumption establishments in the light industrial, heavy industrial, general commercial zoning, and I'm thinking that we might want to talk about having the consumption establishments maybe in a business zone, so we could either have one downtown, or one in, you know, another, you know, general commercial business.
I specifically asked for clarification on that point at the meeting where we were discussing this, and I was told to limit it to what's in this ordinance.
Right.
If you want to revisit that, that's.
Yeah, I'm revisiting that.
So we can revisit certain things. I think we already voted on that.
So tonight, we are not voting, this is, we're putting this out there for the, for public.
This is first reading. We have to go to the first and second.
I will say, going through this has been a very, very confusing and difficult process. I have gone up and down all over the place, but despite all the time that we spent on this, there's still so much confusion over what is in this, that it does make me, it does concern me. And I will go back to something that I've said repeatedly, we were going to get into this to trial it, to see how it goes with the two establishments, neither one of which got up and going. I know there was COVID, there's a million things, but, and it, I still don't know that we really know how this is all going to work, and it's very concerning to me. I'm not feeling really good about this.
The only certainty that I'm aware of is I am certain we will have multiple litigation, no matter what you do.
Exactly. And that's concerning as well, because it's costly. So I.
Know if we don't? We'll have ballot initiatives.
Well, we were, we thought we would have one, and we didn't, for this ballot, this election. That was why we rushed to get this done, and it didn't happen. So I don't want to be rushed to get this done, and I'm, I would like a little bit more time, but I'm not prepared to support this tonight.
Is there anyone else with questions or comments? Then please, let's call the roll.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Campbell?
No.
Fournier?
No.
Goodnow?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Krapp?
Yes.
Menzger?
No.
So motion passes, four to three.
All right, motion passes, and we will still have a second reading, and we will also have the amendments that you mentioned. Okay. Sorry, I forgot my computer.
Oh, you have no computer? Something's going on.
It might be the storm.
Well, I'm even, I'm even using, well, see, I'm using Commissioner Hammond's power now.
Yeah, you know what? Mine shut down too. Complete black screen.
Okay. Me neither. Do you need a, you have a paper copy, right? Are you all set?
Yeah, no, I have.
Okay.
We're sharing.
Okay. We have two copies, too.
I think, I think that, you know, it's important.
They're in.
Thank you.
We're moving on to nine E. Yes, nine E, approved sidewalk building report. I'll entertain a motion?
I move to approve the 2021 sidewalk amendments, assessments for districts number four and number five as presented.
Support. Are there, oh, sorry, go ahead, Mr. Johnson.
I don't really have much to say on this. This is a requirement of our ordinance. We have completed the work in this district. You have the list of the properties and the billings. I would like to stress that the Treasurer's Office will continue to allow the larger sidewalk bills to be paid back over time in accordance with previous commission direction and guidance.
I can't see this list because I've got a black screen here, but there was two columns. One was.
Amount charged.
Yeah, what, what credits go into that first column? I mean, obviously, the amount due is zero, and the second column, it pays, all these bills already went out, we're approving this, but they're all up there already.
Okay, so amount charged, and then that's the credit.
What's the credits? Because if you go down.
That's for people who paid early, to get the 10%.
Yeah, we get a significant number of people that take advantage of the early discount.
Yeah.
No, no, I understand that, but was there credits? I just didn't, I can't find them. I have it marked.
You know, look.
Yeah, there was some.
I think they paid.
No, no, I know that this is, because I have some, and so I paid mine or zero.
Are you talking about the ones that have the zero there?
Yeah, the zero in the first column. I just wondered what it was. There's one, yes.
They have a zero in the first column, like amount charged?
In the second one, in the second number, yes. So a credit was obviously given, or I guess soon.
No, it's one, that's the amount due. So they were charged 480. They didn't make a payment, that's why it's zero underneath, and then total due is 480.
Right, but, no, if you go right here, in the first column, we can take this offline, and we can explain to you.
Okay, let's do that.
Okay, yeah, that's it.
All right, anybody else, questions? Commissioner Menzger?
Yeah, I understand that, you know, the flags are 160 each, and with the prepaid billing, you know, 144, but I just had some questions about, there's a couple of them that didn't make sense to me, well, more than a couple, but I just circled two. On 105 Crocker, the total bill is $400. That doesn't equal $160 square, and it doesn't equal a $144 square. Right below it, there's a lady who's 240. Again, you know, you do the math, 160 times three, or 100, you know, is, if 480, or 160 times two is 320. So were we charging for partial squares?
Yeah, yeah. Sometimes what will actually happen is the square will cross the property line, and two different parcels will get assessed for that. And then there's also the situation where, for various reasons, they might not have actually roomed a pour a full, normal five-by-five square.
Right, that's what happened to mine. We ended up with a bigger square, so you paid more for that one.
Yeah.
Just the way it worked out.
He basically converts it to squares, but he really calculates it on square footage.
Yeah, because there's one here for, on Michigan Avenue that was only 80 bucks. I'm like, how did that work?
Right, probably just a.
All right, anybody else? Okay, roll call, please.
Campbell?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Goodnow?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Krapp?
Yes.
Menzger?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Agenda item 9G, approved smart contract, mister, no, sorry, entertain a motion?
I move to approve the fiscal year 2022 purchase of service, a contract between the Suburban Mobile Mobility Authority for Regional Transportation and the City of Mount Clemens, as presented and to authorize the execution of the contract by the appropriate city officials.
Support.
I'll call on Mr. Wood for this one.
So attached in your package is a contract between the city and Smart. It's a similar contract that we've seen for years and years. I don't know that there's been much change, other than this year, it looks like maybe just a few hundred dollars extra.
Anybody have any questions or comments for Mr. Wood? Commissioner Menzger?
When was the last time we, those fares were adjusted? Do you know? Years and years and years?
No, when, I don't remember exactly, 16, 15, 16? 15 or 16.
Yeah, that's kind of what I thought. And I just, I find that humor is, in this contract, always has a thing for no-shows and penalties. I pulled the statistics for the dial-a-ride, and for 2020, and starting in April, and thus far this year, the no-shows are really down, and that's because ridership is really down. When I look at, like, 2018 and 2019, it is a marked difference for ridership and for no-shows. We suffered a lot of no-shows. So I, I went back and I did some calculation, and it said the percent of no-shows to total calls should not exceed 5%. And although we haven't exceeded that 5% since these statistics in 18, we've come darn close a couple times, but not in 20 or 21. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I just love data, you know?
Okay, thank you. Roll call, please.
Goodnow?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Krapp?
Yes.
Menzger?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Agenda 9H, purchase and payments of invoices.
Who to approve purchases and payment of invoices as presented?
Support.
Anybody have any questions or comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Hammond?
Yes.
Krapp?
Yes.
Menzger?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Goodnow?
Yes.
Agenda item 10, consent agenda?
Who to approve consent agenda as presented?
Support.
Roll call, please.
Krapp?
Yes.
Menzger?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Goodnow?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Krapp?
Yes.
Menzger?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Agenda 9H, purchase and payments of invoices.
Who to approve purchases and payment of invoices as presented?
Support.
Anybody have any questions or comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Hammond?
Yes.
Krapp?
Yes.
Menzger?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Agenda 9H, purchase and payments of invoices.
Who to approve purchases and payment of invoices as presented?
Support.
Anybody have any questions or comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Hammond?
Yes.
Krapp?
Yes.
Menzger?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Goodnow?
Yes.
Agenda item 10, consent agenda?
Who to approve consent agenda as presented?
Support.
Roll call, please.
Krapp?
Yes.
Menzger?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Goodnow?
Agenda eleven. City Manager's Report. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you. Started off with the census results. According to the U.S. Census Bureau, our two thousand and twenty number is fifteen thousand, six hundred and ninety-seven, which represents a three point eight percent drop since two thousand and ten. We've been notified that the former Mount Clemens Public Library, now the Anton Art Center, will be considered for nomination to the National Register of Historic Places by the Michigan Historic Preservation Review Board at a meeting to be held on Friday, September twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-one. ARPA funds, interim final rules for the ARPA program have now been published. And they require that if you want to use funds for revenue loss, which we did initially, that revenue loss has to be calculated on an entity-wide basis, whereas we had previously taken it on a fund-by-fund approach based on guidance provided in one of the early webinars. The only fund that had a qualifying revenue loss was the automobile parking system and we budgeted ARPA funds to replace lost revenue in that fund, actually for two fiscal years. But when looked at entity-wide and following the newly published rules for how to calculate those losses, we will not qualify to use ARPA funds for revenue replacement. That means we'll have to adjust budgets for both two thousand and twenty-one and two thousand and twenty-two to remove ARPA funds from the automobile parking system and instead use general revenue. This does not change our anticipated ARPA funds at all. It, it merely means we have to designate them for a different purpose. But it has to be an allowed purpose. We intend to be recommending most or all of it be allocated to water and/or sewer projects. In the capital area, the only projects that are eligible are water, sewer, and broadband. I'd love to be able to use it on streets and some other things too, but those are the only things we can use. State of the City Address will be September twenty-fourth at Emerald Theater at eight AM. Mayor Krapp will use this as an opportunity to officially launch the new brand. Other speakers that we're planning on will include Sean Wilson from the Boys and Girls Club, Phil Gilchrist from the Anton Art Center, and I believe Macomb County Executive Mark Hackel. This event's hosted by the Macomb County Chamber of Commerce and tickets can be purchased on their website. There's a link here that'll take you right to the ticket purchase place. Art Party from the Anton Art Center's thirtieth annual art party will be September twenty-third. We have a very big week and weekend that week. We have Art Party on the twenty-third, State of the City on the twenty-fourth, concert also on the twenty-fourth, the county's Meet Me at the Trails events on the twenty-fifth, and we're taking part in that in a big way. I'll get to that in a minute. But Art Party will be September twenty-third. There's a link that you can click on to their ticket purchase site. And they've also gotten their invitations out. I got mine today. Meet Me on the Trail activities. The things that we've got scheduled right now include events at Shadyside, Clinton River Park and City Hall, and MacArthur Park in downtown. At Shadyside, we've got advancing Macomb's community art sessions and the Sportport showcase. At Clinton River Park and City Hall, the Boys and Girls Club will bring their, their gaming truck and other related activities. And if all goes well, we'll hold a rubber duck race on the river. At MacArthur Park and the YMCA, they'll have an Art Center duck-themed river art project, a library story walk, and what they call a make and take program. I have no idea what that is.
You made it, you take it.
And the YMCA Sportport program. Downtown, I'm listening this with it because the DDA is sponsoring, is, is promoting it, even though it is being organized independently by one of our DDA members, is a natural health and wellness fair on South Main Street. And that looks like that's going to be, should be a fairly nice event. Other upcoming DDA events, we have, in the amendment to the DDA schedule that was approved, we've added another drive-in movie. The movie hasn't been designated yet.
Yes, it has. Top Gun.
Top Gun?
Yep.
When did that happen?
As a nod, I think today.
Top Gun's going to be this weekend.
September, yeah, this weekend, right. That's the one you're talking about, isn't it?
September.
September eleventh, right?
Yeah.
And it's a nod to our first responders. It's to celebrate our first responders, Top Gun.
Okay. And then we've got the Uptown Art Craft and Car Show on September eighteenth and nineteenth. We've got another Uptown Friday Night Concert, this one again featuring Kathleen Murray and Soul Commission at seven o'clock on September twenty-fourth at the Fountain Stage. What else we got? Another link to COVID. You can see where, where the numbers are. They're actually getting, they're getting concerningly high again. They're higher than they were when we initially shut down City Hall. Again, there's a link to Macomb County Vaccine Central where you can make an appointment to get a vaccine and anybody over age twelve is eligible. I'm going to keep advertising the pancake breakfast. Well, this will be the last time because of the date, but that's on September eleventh. The same time that the soapbox derby, Grand Prix is occurring. Fire Department Open House will be October twenty-fourth from one to four. Didn't list it here because I wrote this first, but I got a peek at the Black Cat last week and it is spectacular. It's really going to be nice.
Is there a date for opening yet?
It's in about two weeks.
Yeah, they're about to. Yeah, I think they're shooting for, well, ten days if I'm looking at my calendar right, so.
Very cool.
I think he was shooting for about the twentieth.
Close to it, yeah. And it is, I will agree, it's beautiful.
It's, I think it very much hearkens back to the elegance of the past. I think you'll like it. I, I was actually quite floored by it. I was just expecting it to be an ordinary coffee shop and it's not.
Very cool.
Then I got future agendas. And of course, that's just what we're planning at the moment. You know, there'll be additional things added later. Some of this stuff will get taken away or moved, but it gives you an idea of what's coming. Thank you.
All right. Sorry, didn't click back enough. All right, well, we'll move to our, okay, go ahead. Do you have any questions?
Yes, I have asked a couple of times now when we're going to have a discussion about the ARPA money and now that it's, the parameters of use have changed, I think that makes it even more important that we have that meeting and that discussion. I would assume that somebody in the staff is taking care of tickets for the commission for the mayor's State of the City address.
I believe the chamber's already taken care of that.
So you're going to get tickets for us or issue us tickets or?
I think they've already got you on the list.
That's nice to know. I'd like to know where we're at with the fire inspector that we've been talking about since May.
We completed our part of the letter of understanding what the bargaining unit was giving to them last week. I expect we'll probably get it back from them this week.
And then how soon will we be hiring?
Once we have that, we'll, we'll be ready to proceed. How soon we hire is going to depend on a couple of factors. One is whether we have an internal candidate or not.
You will.
If we do, the next issue is how quickly we can replace the firefighter because we will not start the inspector before we've got a replacement as a firefighter. We think we have somebody who's already on the list, employed by another agency, that we believe will come here if given the opportunity.
Okay, and my last thing is, is I think we need to have a discussion of the filming of work sessions. We've had several work sessions lately that were, I think, would be beneficial for the public to see. One of them being the street parking. We've all heard things about the street parking. It was all over Facebook. I think that that would have been helpful to film. It would have answered some of the questions that the public had. It might have stopped some of the, you know, false or incorrect information. But I also think that these kind of discussions are important for residents to see how their commissioners, how their representatives are, are dealing with things. The street parking discussion, some of the pot discussions, and actually, I think, some of the strategic plan discussions, we should have in the public, whether it's on a regular agenda or whether it is filmed, the work sessions are filmed, they should be available for our residents to, to participate in or to see. That's my, and my.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions for Mr. Johnson? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to public participation. This is the second portion of the meeting that we invite the public to address the commission. We ask that you give us your full name, your residential address, and you abide by our two-minute rule. We will first address the in-person audience and then we'll go to Zoom. Is there anyone in person who would like to address the commission?
Thomas Burns, two ninety-one Jones, continue. So, my question is very simple. I've sat in these meetings and watched you talk about blight, not watched you talk about marijuana. I've sat in these meetings and listened to you give the ice arena a one hundred thousand dollar stopgap loan. I also heard you put in a millage, not, put in a bond, for three million dollars for repairs to the ice arena. What I have been seeing is significant financial investment for those people in our community who cannot afford art classes at the Anton Art Center, who cannot afford lessons at the ice arena, who cannot afford memberships to the YMCA. Who's going to stand up for them? Personally speaking, I'm a father of five children. My children have no place to go in the City of Mount Clemens where they can partake in a baseball league or softball league, basketball league. It's the only city I've ever seen that has eleven city parks, two community centers, and no community program. As a member of your Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, we sent a formal letter to Mr. Johnson asking him to approve the budget for us to hire a recreation director. That was sent from Mr. Tingley. We have yet to have a response about a recreation director for the City of Mount Clemens. So I would like to know, when we cut out Parks and Recreation back in two thousand and five, the city was operating on a seven hundred thousand dollar budget. Understandably so, cuts needed to be made, things needed to be taken away. City is now operating on an eleven million dollar budget. I would like to know, and I will be waiting for my response at the next City Commission meeting, what is the city's financial position as Commissioner Menzor alluded to with this American Rescue Plan money to make a significant investment in recreation for the children of the City of Mount Clemens? There are sixteen thousand residents who live here and about twenty percent of them are children.
Is there anyone else from the public who would like to speak?
Ruthie Stevenson, sixty-nine Bain Street. I concur with some of what he stated. As a board member for the Macomb YMCA, we do our best to raise funds in order to pay for memberships for the community and we continually do this all through the years. So I understand, we worked with Kern's Community Center with different kinds of programs with the swimming and other things. But like he states, we need a program with Parks and Recreation for the city with more than just, you know, going into a building. We need outside recreation as well.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
I'm Deb Bishop from fifty-four Kendrick and I'm changing my hats. I'm not historical for the moment. I am League of Women Voters for Macomb County. Okay, don't look at that. So Macomb County League of Women Voters is very interested in keeping our end up on four one one. Vote four one one dot org is on the internet. We promote it so heavily. And so when there is going to be an election and it's unopposed, that individual is not very likely to send back answers to the five questions that are there. But when it is a race, then we really would like to have everyone's answers back there and, and put it out. And again, we are nonpartisan a hundred percent and the Michigan League of Women Voters approached me and asked me to go to some local Macomb County group. It could be the, the county commissioners, it could be the city commission, whatever, and to report back on a routine basis throughout the whole state of Michigan. So there's been four of us in Macomb County that have thrown in and we'll start doing that. So just to let you know that they're very interested in grassroots and, you know, a just way of doing things. So thank you very much.
Anyone else? Patrick, is there anyone on Zoom? Okay. All right, we will move on to Commissioner comments. Commissioner Goodnow.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thanks. Commissioner Voorhees.
Yes, first of all, I would like to thank Ms. Bishop for the porch walk. I grew up on Canfield, on the north end of town. I went to school at Lincoln School. That is a great area. It has some fantastic houses. We need to walk around and take a look at the, the architecture and the roof lines. Those houses are, are gems. They really are. So kudos to you and, and to everybody who volunteered. I will, I'm going to do a little shout-out for the, this Friday, September the tenth, is the Mount Clemens High School All Alumni Night at the Rec Bowl. Having graduated in nineteen sixty-nine, this, for the old folks, it starts at five and probably ends at eight, but it does, it does run on until midnight or one o'clock. It's always a fun time because it covers all the classes. So once a bather, always a bather. The branding, I'm looking forward to, to seeing a new, fresh look for the City of Mount Clemens. I think the brand is great. I must say that Teresa did a great job on the characters of our, of our ducks. I've asked her to give me a copy and then sign it because I think that picture will be valuable at some point. Maybe to the garbage man, I'm not sure. But anyway, and with that, once a Clemite, always a Clemite.
Thank you. Commissioner Menzor?
So I believe firmly that it is the commission's responsibility to utilize our local businesses. And so I said that I was going to re, you know, reestablish a tradition that I used to do and tell you where I've been in our city. I've been to O'Halloran's in Orleans and Gumbo, some of, some of those several times. I've been to the Rec Bowl and, by the way, if you didn't know, on Wednesdays when it's jazz night, Miller Brothers is now serving ice cream at the Rec Bowl. So you can go up there and have a really good dinner and then get some ice cream. And they did that last Friday at another event. I've been to Iceman's Garden. If you haven't been there and you are concerned about the bugs and mosquitoes because it's on the river, don't. They have fans, their food is great, they have a good band on Thursday nights. It is a wonderful place to go. I've been to the Golden Greek. I've been to Paperback Writers. I was in there today. I've been to Weirdsville Records. I've been to Max and Ollie's. But there's other businesses in the city that people should utilize. These are our local businesses too. You know, there's a place called First Financial Coaching up on Main Street, right across from the post office. If you're not sure how to invest your money, where to invest your money, the best thing to do with your money, go talk to a guy named Mike Sarcheck. Mike also used to be on the Anton Art Center Board of Directors. He was the treasurer for a long time. And one of his partners, Jeff Fearest, I think his name is.
First.
First is a member of the. First is a member of the Rotary, is it? Or the, yeah, Rotary.
Right.
Okay, um, I've been to Cass Collision. I was there very unhappily because I got rear-ended on Cass Avenue and all that construction right past Grosebeck. Um, you know how people play that game, they try and zip in in front of you and so the car behind you in front of you, they slam on their gas and then stop abruptly, while she ran right into the back of me. And so, I have, uh, $1,100 worth of damage to my car. Um, and I got a flat tire out of it. Um, thankfully, my insurance agent is an agency right up on Cass, Macomb Gerlock. They saved me, I can't tell you, is about $700 in, uh, homeowners and auto, um, because they, you know, their broker, they fire it out and I've saved a lot of money from them. So I went and saw them with all my tells of woe.
Commissioner. I, uh, I, I don't think you should be endorsing, uh, private businesses.
I'm endorsing businesses in the city of Mount Clemens.
But, you know, we're not supposed to utilize public funds, which this meeting is, uh, telecast and, and supported by public funds for private.
I have always talked about the bars and restaurants, and if, so if that's allowed, I think that a mention of our other businesses should be allowed.
Well, you can mention, but you're, you're going a little far afield when you're saying how much you lost and, and how, and how your insurance agents, there's a whole lot of insurance agents in the city, and, uh, I'm sure they would like endorsements as well.
All right, I'll amend that. I went to Macomb Gerlock. I went to Cass Collision. There you go. Um, I wanted to talk about the Mount Clemens High School football team. They have won their first two games. Um, I went to their first one, I was unable to go last Friday. Um, they did a phenomenal job. These guys are just killing it. They, they won by big scores, by, you know, more than 30 points. Um, uh, so, I want to remind you that there's a game coming up this week, Friday. Um, there is also Homecoming. If you come to any game, if you only want to pick one game, come to Homecoming on October 8th. Come to Homecoming. We are, there are some people who are talking about how we get some entertainment at that game, how we get a live musician, um, to, uh, play the National Anthem, uh, you know, uh, so, please, come to the Homecoming game if you, if you can't come to any other, other one, come on the, on the 8th, on Friday the 8th. Um, I wanted to tell you too, uh, we've talked about all the things going on this week Saturday, um, the pancake breakfast with the fire department, the, uh, soapbox derby, but also downtown on Main Street at 4:00 is the 9/11 ceremony, um, in front of our fallen heroes monument. Um, the Sheriff Department Honor Guard will be out there, there will be several speeches by people. Um, I believe our fire department will be out there displaying the flags, um, with the ladder trucks like they usually do. Um, I think the Patriot Riders will be there. This is the 20th anniversary of 9/11. We promised we would never forget, so I hope to see some of you up there. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell.
Uh, we had two residents here tonight. One that was talking about how people have pride in their homes by putting historic markers on there. So I thank her for working, having the markers put on their homes. And then we also had a resident here, Ms. Stevenson, who talks about someone who owns property but doesn't live here and doesn't take care of it. So I, it is a contrast of ownership and how people take care of things. If you live here and you own it, you're gonna take care of it. If you don't live here and you just use it as, for whatever, you don't have the long-term vested interest in it and you let the weeds take over, which is unfortunate, so, pride of home, ownership and ownership in this town shows that if you live here and you take, you'll take care of it and you're proud of it. So, that's all I have to say.
I have no comments. Thank you. And Commissioner Fournier.
Well, there's a lot happening this September and, and, um, I want to know who planned the art party on September 23rd and 8:00 in the morning the next day, the State of the City. That's, uh, but.
I know.
Um, one thing, and, uh, Bev Bishop is clearly a very active person in our community, and she is Miss History, my God, she knows everything about, uh, whatever happened in the city, but she ma- mentioned very briefly the train station, and, um, I think you all know where it is. It's on Cass and it has those fall tours where they take you on the little, you know, the train ride. It is a, keeping that building up is, is very expensive and it needs a lot of work. And a membership in the Train Depot Society, I forget exactly what it's called, is very inexpensive. I believe it's only like $35. And they really, really need, um, additional members. I, I'm a member and, uh, it, it's, you know, not, not a lot of time or anything, but I really encourage everyone to take a look. It's this, it's a very nice little museum that we have in this city. It's a little corner of, of our town that we want to preserve and for a very little amount of money, we can all support it and keep it going. Thank you.
How do people join?
Pardon?
How do people become members?
If you go online, there is a, an application, um, or call me, I'll, I'll get, um, or email me, I will get those applications for you, and I'm sure Bev knows exactly where they're at. But it would also be nice if we had something online, even on our city, for some of these historical, um, the, the Macomb Historical Commission, the Train Depot, some of these that we can, um, if someone goes to the city of Mount Clemens, they, it's out there. Yeah.
Patrick, are you making note of this?
For sure.
Okay.
Thank you, Patrick.
All right, thank you. Um, okay, so, let's see, uh, sorry. Um, well, first thing, with the history, um, I have my house plaque, uh, registered, my application ready, so I, and a check for you, so just wait. Don't leave without, without wanting me to get that to you.
What year, what year, what year was your house?
Uh, 25.
Very good.
Yeah, yeah, which, it was, it says 26 on the thing, anyway, we'll talk about it. Um, art party, um, State of the City, Natural Health and Wellness Fair, um, I mean, what huge weekend and uptown concerts, um, we have a big, big weekend coming up, um, well, this weekend too, with the Lions Soapbox, uh, Lions Grand Prix, Soapbox Derby, um, on the 11th, the Fireman's Pancake Breakfast. We have a lot of things happening, positive things happening in downtown Mount Clemens, uptown. Please come down and support, um, support the city and all of these organizations that are putting a lot of, um, a lot of their fundraising efforts into it and also a lot of their, just, uh, volunteer hours. So, um, we thank you, we thank all of the, um, organizations that are putting on these events because they're really fun for the entire family. Um, I'd like to thank everyone for their patience and for their, um, time that we've put into the recreation, um, recreational marijuana ordinance. Um, I know it's not perfect, I know there's things that everyone has compromised on because, you know, uh, one person didn't write this ordinance. Um, as an, as an entity, we came together and had to kind of give and take, um, and so I'm looking forward to moving, moving forward with it and then also, um, you know, working with the city's staff and the businesses in town, um, to then, eventually, we'll have to, well, I'm sure we'll have to revise and, and kind of tweak this ordinance to make it the best that we can for the city. Um, but I'm, I'm glad that we're moving forward. Um, I also want to close with, I have, from the beginning, I have two children, 11 and 14, and I too, um, struggle with recreation opportunities for my kids in this city. And I think it's a shame that they had to go to Lance Cruz to find out that we have neighbors, you know, around the block with four kids, and now they play with them. But they didn't have that opportunity to even meet them because they don't go to the same schools, and they don't just go to the park and play. Um, and, and that's, that's a shame, because what's going to happen is because of our, because our community is disjointed with the younger generation, and they don't have the roots in the school system, and that is a reality, they're not going to have the city pride and the city dedication that our generations before us had. And so, if we want those opportunities for all the kids, no matter what socioeconomic background, it has to be, it has to be an investment by us and the city. And I have said that from the very beginning of taking this office and in being in the, as a commissioner. We have to put our money where our mouth is. And so, I would like to see a recreation director in our next, in our budget now and in the future. We have to make an investment for our future and our future generation. And I know that, I know that we have a lot of things that we have to pay for, and I know we have a limited budget, but we have to, I, I think we are shortchanging the next generation by not doing that. So, those are my comments. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Can I ask one more question?
You may.
Can we have, at the next, by the next meeting, or even before the next meeting, and I apologize, I got wound up in the train station, I didn't mention this, what we're going to do about the property on grass that, that Ms. Stevenson keeps talking about?
Um, we do have a resolution to that, and I apologize because it was written down on my list of things to mention. Um, we do have a resolution to that. Mr. Tinkley has, um, executed the work to be completed by a contractor, so that, and then it will be charged to the landowners, landowners taxes, a lien essentially. So, that will be remedied, that, that, that work will be completed.
Thank you.
Sorry that I didn't mention that. Okay.
Thank you.
Now, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Support.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Yeah.[1322.33]